School district to order. First on the agenda is a call to order, and all members are present tonight. And next is the pledge of allegiance. So would you please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I missed the ordering here. Next is roll call. All members are present tonight. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda? By Ben, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes seven zero. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless a board member or citizen so requests. On tonight's consent agenda is check wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement, the approval of the school board minutes from January 8th for the organizational meeting, January 8th for our regular meeting, and for January 25th for their special and study sessions, the resignations, terminations, and non-renewals. So all those in favor of the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes seven zero. Next on the agenda is the resolution of the gifts. Tonight we have gifts from the Beneviti Community Impact Fund, the U.S. Bank Foundation, Mrs. Dornbus, Augsburg University, Teresa Lovejoy. And this is a resolution for the acceptance of those gifts and will be... First, I have to ask for a motion for the acceptance of the gifts. Do I have a motion? By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a resolution and will be enacted by a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 That passes seven zero. Next on the agenda is Laker Pride. Dr. Stallow.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here this evening or for being in the viewing public. We've got two different items to celebrate this evening regarding Laker Pride. And the first one, I'm going to actually get some assistance from, so I'd like to invite Dan Steger to come up, please. As Dan makes his way up here, I'll just provide a bit of context. Dan is representing the Optimist Group this evening. We have a longstanding, wonderful partnership with the Optimist Group, the club. They support our students in many ways. And tonight's, Dan's going to be sharing another celebration that they are helping with as we talk about and celebrate the artist of this beautiful painting in front of us. So I'll hand it over to Dan for now.
Yeah, the Optimist Club is a community service organization in Prior Lake and Savage, not unlike Rotary or Lions Club, but we have a specific goal of, our motto is bringing out the best in kids. So we raise funds and disperse funds for a wide range of youth-oriented activities. We administer a number of contests. We award a bunch of scholarships. And one of the things that we do is choose a painting by a high school student every year. We make an award to the student for that, and we donate the painting then to the district who installs it here in this building. So to that end, I'd like to ask Tressa Schultz to come up. So, Tressa, I'm going to ask you to say a couple of things about your painting here and perhaps your inspiration, method, anything you like.
Well, this painting is titled Rise or Fall. It's an acrylic painting. I painted it last year during the very political controversy time with all of the elections going on, and I wanted to do something that people could interpret either way, rather America is falling into despair or rising up from it. And that is where the name Rise or Fall came into play. However you would like to interpret the picture, politics happening right now in our country, it's up to you to decide.
Good. Okay. So with that, I'd like to present you with this. Oh, okay, okay. And our congratulations from the Optimist Club, and thanks for sharing your gift with us. All right.
Wait. You've got to get a picture.
First of all, we usually do this event a little bit sooner, but there was a delay because Tressa's painting was actually on display in Washington. So we just got it back. So again, another amazing endeavor. Second of all, I want to share with you, there's also another amazing award that Tressa received, and this was with the Scholastic Art Award for the Minnesota region. There were over 3,800 submissions for this award. Of the submissions, there were 371 Gold Key Awards, 363 Silver Key Awards, and 735 Honorable Mention Awards. Tressa received one of the Gold Awards for her painting she did for the school play, Christmas Carol, The Past Remembered. And Josette Tellen, a 10th grader, also won an honorable mention for her painting. So with that, we just want to tell you how proud we are of your passion and how you represent and really show all of us what it means to be reaching your full potential as you not only excel academically but also in art as well. So thank you and congratulations. Secondly, this evening, you know that our strategic plan grounds us in everything that we do as we seek collectively to ensure that all learners reach their full potential. One of our strategic directions actually calls out our focus on environmental education. And as many of you, as all of you know, our environmental education efforts, the E part of our eSTEM, have been joined by really a focus in recent years on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Part of our priority work under that strategic direction is really looking at how we continue to provide opportunities for students to gain insight and skills in the field of computer science, and part of that is in coding. So at this point, I'd like to hand over the microphone to Kevin Shettenger, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and he's got a team with him that are going to highlight some amazing work in which they've been engaged.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stallow, and good evening, board members. I'm really excited here to recognize some amazing work of our elementary media specialist team. We have a contingent here just to show you some of the incredible work they've been bringing to kids and really leaning into something that is new to all of us, new to them. And we also have some middle school teachers who are bringing some of those same experiences to our secondary students as well. So without further ado, I'll pass over to Kate Tingley.
Thank you. I'm one of the media specialists here in the district, and I have Leah Quinn and Amy Schwengler with us. And we're representing all the media specialists tonight, but not everyone can be here because of illnesses. The Prior Lake Savage Elementary Media Team began teaching computer science about 10 years ago. We were introduced to Scratch, which is a computer programming language designed specifically for kids. It makes coding accessible and fun. None of us have had any career experience with coding. We're all lifelong teachers, so we had to teach ourselves how to use Scratch. And we learned along with our students. We learned that it is a wonderful tool to foster a growth mindset with our students. We initially were teachers who taught coding, but over time we evolved. We began exploring the concepts behind the coding and the concepts and how they extend to computer science. We began focusing on vocabulary such as algorithm, persistence, debugging, and conditional, words that help the students understand why their code works the way it does. As a team, we began to learn about computational thinking, and we created lessons that help students develop their problem-solving skills and practice persistence when problems become difficult. That brings us to this year. Every elementary student in the district is learning computer science during media class, that's K through five. We are taking a full curriculum created by the website, code.org, and modifying it to meet the needs of our students in our spaces. We are building a strong foundation with our young learners that we hope to carry into the middle school and high school and beyond. We understand that not all of our students will become programmers, but the skills they are learning, how to deconstruct a problem, how to work collaboratively, how to be a creator, not just a consumer of technology, are essential skills that our students will use, no matter which field they go to. And we would like to take the opportunity to show you one of our coding activities using the B-bots that we have at each of our elementary buildings.
So B-bots are something we are using with primarily K and first because they're designed for young learners. They're easy to use, which is great for those K and first graders to introduce them to computer science, coding concepts, and they're obviously very engaging. They're fun, so the kids love to use them. They have basic, simple commands, forward, backward, right, left. This gets them learning those concepts of how to program.
It also is really great to help them think about things as far as directionality and planning and going ahead and doing some problem solving and some sequencing. So generally, we have students working either in pairs or in a small group with these bots. They often have a desired location that they need to program the bot to move to. So they get very excited with that. We do have a couple of activities up here. If any of you want to come and play, we'd be happy to help you.
(laughter)
This is exactly what our kindergarten students kind of go through as they think about. I want to go from the bear and see bears here to the crayons. Okay, let's try that again. Clear it out. Last time.
Do it so I can see. Oh, it is deep. I can't. I'll have to my way.
I think you must. (laughter)
So you can see the bots are really easy for the kids to do. And sometimes when we first play with them, I'll just stop the animal and toss it. And I don't know if you saw the pictures, but they like to have them when they're first exploring, go under.
Yeah. So it's like super exciting. Even that's made the difference.
Little place that they're holding down.
Nice photographer.
You know, so it's so much fun.
I played with them before. I was wondering, yeah, Leah Richmay worked too. But thank you, Amy.
Play with them at times, so it's just ready to go. Just telling them what to do, like how many tricks. Probably go once.
So much fun to be in my neighborhood.
Kindergartners are struggling with it, and they're...
(laughter) Thank you very much.
The amazing work and challenging work, we know. We are working on with the elementary students. We also know there's a really large gender gap in computer science, both at secondary levels and in the workplace. So we're really taking that seriously and thinking about how, ways we can address it as we create this really exciting demand and opportunity in our elementary schools. So I'd like to invite Carrie Doby and Rahine up. They're members of Girl Code, which is led by Carrie Doby and Amanda Fay, one of our technology integration specialists at the middle school, really focused on establishing a community of girls who say, yes, I can code. Let's get together, support each other, and have fun learning computer science. Would you like to say a few things about your experience? Thank you.
My experience as a girl coder has been really important to me. Older, when I'm older, I really want to be a technology engineer. This is the great basics for me, and I really want to understand the basics of it so later in the future I can go above and beyond in my career. This has been really important to me since, ever since I was little. All these teachers from elementary school has really supported me in my decision, so I really like to thank them for everything they've done for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to community education for partnering with us on this, and thank you to our elementary media specialists. Our middle school business teachers are also a part of this. Really, it's just a story of teachers leaning into hard and new work and figuring it out to make great experiences like this possible for kids. So thank you all very much. (applause)
Next on the agenda are the personnel items, and that will be handled by Director of Human Resources, Mr. Matt Mons.
All right. Hello. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Stallow. First up, I recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Todd, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes seven zero.
And next, I present the following leaves of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the leaves of the absence?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ben, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes seven zero.
And next up is a staffing request for educational support staff. All of these positions would begin in the 1718 school year, the spring here, or this winter and spring, and only one of them would continue into 1819. And so as we look at this, or I'm sorry, two of them. First up, we are looking at the addition of an Assistant Director of Operations and Transportation. That's a position that we felt a need for for quite a while. We are, I would hazard to say, the only metro district anywhere near our size that has exactly one administrator handling operations and transportation. So that's an area where we knew that we needed some additional help right now, and in addition, we're going to have considerable work coming in that that department is going to be handling in the foreseeable future. That has, that position, the funding for that position has also been included in our budget over the last two years as we've been planning forward. Next up is a part-time custodian at the District Distribution Center. We found that at that site, the DDC is housed at Twin Oaks Middle School, that the amount of incoming shipments is having a significant impact on staffing there. Because we have our DDC at Twin Oaks, it's something that we feel we need to support with some additional staff so that they don't experience a burden unlike the burden experienced by other sites with deliveries. And then the rest of the positions here are temporary in nature and we're approving for the rest of this school year only. Some additional support at Edgewood, Lola Delago, to assist with nun supervision. A student support paraprofessional in the Early Childhood Special Education Program. At Edgewood, that's due to new student enrollment. And a student support paraprofessional at Grainwood Elementary. They currently, they now have their second section that has gone over the number of 24 for kindergarten. When that's happened, we've typically added a student support paraprofessional to assist in those classrooms. So with that, I make the request.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the educational support staff?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Melissa, are there any questions or comments?
I just have a comment.
Lee.
All of the ones you listed, I agree with. I especially agree with the one on the Assistant Director because when the district was significantly smaller than this, we did separate those two. We had, transportation operations were separated. Now we're a lot, lot bigger, and it's all on one, one person. And they definitely need the help. So irregardless of what else is going on, it's, it's long overdue. So I'm glad that's happening.
Are there any questions or comments additional? I have one question. Can you go through which ones again are for this year only, the remainder of this year, which ones which will continue?
Yes. So the first two listed, the Assistant Director of Operations and Transportation, and the part-time custodian at the DDC, will be ongoing into the future. The rest of those positions are medium-term subpositions, meaning that's 100 workdays or less, or 99 workdays or less.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes seven zero.
And then we do have, I am bringing forward a revised job description. This is not a new position. However, this job description has not seen the light of day for quite a while, and so it's really kind of cosmetic changes in order to just ensure that there's clear workflow for those employees and to just clarify some of the order of operations within the special ed offices at our sites. So with that, I make the recommendation to accept the description.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the job description for the Secretary of Special Education Building?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Mary.
I have a question with regards to our overall staffing and how we've already, how many openings do we currently have now in special ed?
On the teaching side?
Yes.
We don't have any openings on the teaching side.
You fill them all this year?
Yes, correct. We fill them all.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes seven zero. Next on the agenda, unfinished business, is our 2018 legislative platform approval. And presenting tonight is Dr. Stallow and our Legislative and Community...
Engagement.
Engagement Committee.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Community Engagement and Legislative Committee did study multiple other platforms from professional organizations, as well as reviewed the priorities in our districts and the needs in our district. This is something that we do annually. As the legislators kick off their session, we like to be sure that we have studied the issues and have a platform that we can all then speak to when we visit the Capitol or visit with our legislators. So the draft legislative platform was brought before the board on January 22nd at the board work session for a first read, and we'll be requesting approval on that as the second read this evening. In addition, earlier this evening, we had an opportunity to have a dinner meeting with Senator Eric Pratt and Representative Drew Christensen. It was a great opportunity for us to share our priorities with them prior to the start of the session on February 20th, and also an opportunity to hear some of their insights and priorities as well. This is a longstanding tradition and one that we are, take very seriously to maintain really strong partnerships. We appreciate when our legislators are in session or in committee and step out into the hall and give us a call to get perspective, and we want to ensure that that continues. So with that, unless there's other comments from any of the committee members, we would seek approval.
Seeing none, do I have a motion for the approval of our 2018 legislative platform?
So moved.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Todd, any questions or comments for Dr. Stallow or the committee? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes seven zero. Next on the agenda is a report from our Strategic Direction B to expand and embed environmental focus across the district. And presenting tonight is Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Shettenger, or Mr. Shettenger and his team.
Doctor soon enough. Six months or so. If all goes according to plan. Thank you very much, board members. Good to see you again. I'm excited to be here with John Dahl, our Assistant Principal at Twin Oaks Middle School, to give you an update on PDSA 4A, which is to expand and embed eSTEM across the district with a specific focus on a comprehensive E12 plan to expand computer science, including coding skills, in order to ensure additional opportunities for all students in STEM. You've seen a little bit of our teachers and our students in action, and I'd like to give you some more details tonight about some of the details behind this work. I've shared some of these statistics with you before, but why are we bringing computer science to Prior Lake Savagery schools? There's some statistics out here about the amount of open jobs simply in Minnesota. 11,500, the relative nature of the jobs, they're relatively lucrative compared to other professions. And then the supply of people with these skill sets simply is not meeting the demand in Minnesota and nationwide. So we also know that parents greatly demand this kind of education and love that their children have these experiences, but only 40% of schools in the state even offer these types of programs or opportunities. So we know that there's a high demand and a relatively low supply, both for opportunities and for people with these skill sets. Computer science also fits in very well with our eSTEM work. It relates tightly with FabLab and our maker spaces and LEGO League and robotics, and really is a part of our overall plan to transform students from being passive consumers of technology and passive consumers of electronic or digital media into creators and real deep understanders of these types of media and these types of tools. So with that, we were charged last year as a committee to say, let's bring computer science to Prior Lake Savagery schools. So a broad team of teachers and principals and district administrators got together and really did some visioning. What do we think computer science could look like at Prior Lake Savagery schools, and let's start bringing it to life? We don't want to spin and think about it for a year or two. We want to start bringing these opportunities to kids as soon as we can. So with that, you met several of our media specialists earlier today. Our elementary media specialists got together and started creating units that were based off the computer science standards as well as ISTI standards, and they were really backwards mapped from those standards and used code.org resources as a method to bring those learning opportunities to kids. What's really nice about those curricula is that they're hands-on and digital. So students get to do things like manipulate a B-bot physically around a table or an obstacle, or code one of their classmates into jumping through an obstacle, learning some of those fundamental skills like evaluating an algorithm while not doing it necessarily on a screen. As they progress through elementary, they learn how to transfer those skills to block-based coding and eventually Java and other computer languages when they get into upper elementary and middle school. So last spring, that team really developed these units. We evaluated some resources and brought this all to life and said, let's, let's start and fall. And so beginning in 2017-18, all K-5 students are getting these fundamental computer science experiences integrated with digital citizenship as well. Our secondary business teachers have begun to develop and review their current offerings, including digital world, keyboarding classes, webpage design classes, really thinking about where are the opportunities to integrate and strengthen some of the computer science components of those classes. We started a Girl Code class at the middle school, as you saw earlier before, and we also have integrated with KidsCo to make some of these opportunities for computer science available before and after school and for some of our youngest learners as well. Next year brings continued development in elementary, kind of a review and a refinement of our current curriculum. We know that we will have to review every single year because of the nature and speed of computer science learning. And we know that where our fifth graders are right now, our kindergartners or our second graders might be at that point in two years. So we know we have to continually refine and evaluate where our kids are ending up and make sure that we're staying in front of and providing them with more opportunities to deepen their skills. We will also bring our sixth grade digital world class to life next year, which will provide kind of the next step skills, building on our K-5 curriculum. And our seventh and eighth grade courses will be developed and getting implemented for the year after that. At the high school level, we want to develop several on-ramp courses. We currently have AP Computer Science, and then we have some keyboarding and webpage design courses, but we want to give more opportunities for kids to get into this track so that they're not maybe intimidated by AP Computer Science or have ways to build up their skills ahead of that class. That's the work of next year. Elementary, like I said, this is kind of a detailed look. You see what code.org really looks like in the bottom left. Kids are creating... Kids are creating algorithms and programming using movable blocks. And the blocks make maybe a little cartoon character do something on the screen. So they can create games, they can create stories, they can do all kinds of things, really up to their own creativity and skill. We have hands-on digital learning tools, B-bots, you saw Spheros, there's Ozobots, and we have training from code.org and also weekly media specialist team meetings, as well as meeting with members of my team as well, to strengthen these teachers and make sure they're feeling confident in their skills. As we head into the future, we know they're going to need continued time and support with revising those units, bringing them to life, and then evaluating the resources, making sure that we're staying up to date and providing our teachers and our kids with resources that meet their needs. There's a look at some coding on the left, you know, so it doesn't look the way you might think coding for kids might look. So the kids are programming each other to work through that obstacle course, and on the, on the left, they're manipulating some physical things to make a character on the screen move. At the secondary level, I'm going to pass it on to John Dahl here.
Yes. At the secondary level, we're going to continue exploring the code.org, computer science discoveries system, and then the, the project leadway for the obvious strengths that it has in better helping our students today, and then also looking into the future. From a professional development standpoint, one of the things that we just most recently did is we sponsored a site visit to Minnetonka. And what was unique about this was that our teachers, who don't have a coding background, went to visit this classroom. The classroom was of a science teacher, and they were given the opportunity and said, hey, you want to do some coding? And the person said, yeah, sure. And it really gave them the confidence. There was interest in doing this all along, but it really set aside some of the worries they had because it wasn't within their wheelhouse, per se. In addition to that, we, they got excited about this and decided to dig a little further into this with the code.org, and they have applied for a very selective one-week training this summer. We're crossing our fingers that they get admitted into that, but they're very excited about that. And then moving forward also, we're going to continue with the girl code because they're having a blast with it. It's been very successful. The students are learning a wonderful, wonderful skills. And then also with that, we're going to continue looking at, through our business department, at what are the implications moving forward with our sixth grade digital world course, and then moving forward into our seventh and eighth grade computer science and business courses as well. So.
Any questions or comments?
Are there any questions from the board, from Mr. Shuttenger? Mary?
Yes. Could you walk us through how you're building the classes in, let's say, after they get out of the manual in-classroom work without being in front of the keyboards? How are you building that into their average curriculum? Because I know one of the questions we had last year was the room in the curriculum to put a class like this in there. So how is that working?
At the elementary level, right, it really is living in media right now. So it, it fits into, you know, as the media specialist mentioned, they've been dabbling in this for quite a few years, but it was really last year with this intense focus that we put all the pieces together and said, really, let's make sure that every kid in the district has this opportunity. You know, I think as we head into next year, one of the things that we talked about exploring is sponsoring a class for other teachers, maybe an art teacher or a math teacher at elementary or secondary level, who says, I want to learn what the kids are learning, just so I can wrap my head around it and think, maybe there is an intersection with my math unit or an art project that I'm currently doing or something, just to stir up some of those ideas. I think it can be intimidating to people, think, oh, I don't, I don't know how to code, I don't know how to program, but once you see really the way and what kids are learning, it's approachable. So I think that's something we could sponsor to help, help expand that a bit into other content areas and really help kids see the connections and to see the opportunities in other content areas as well. So at secondary, I think it would be pretty similar.
Or, go ahead.
I know that we've been closing and limiting computer labs and putting most of the media, most of the computers in there in the libraries. How has that affected the ability to get everybody's kid in, everybody's, everybody's kids in the classroom, excuse me, involved in this? Is there a limited space? Is there an issue with lack of keyboards?
We've been lucky to have both a good supply of iPads and Chromebooks available in the places where the labs aren't available anymore. So we're also very careful when we do review resources to make sure they're device agnostic, you know, so that we're not tying ourselves into a resource that can only be used on a, on a desktop. Or, you know, code.org is a great example that works equally as well on a Chromebook, almost as well on an iPad, and perfectly well on a desktop as well. So we're being really careful about that, and I know the tech department is going through a lot of work to really make sure the Wi-Fi network is robust, to make sure that those tools and these online resources that we have are available to kids at all times. So we're working through it. It hasn't presented much of a challenge at all so far.
One more, go ahead.
With the, you know, you kind of mentioned an excellent thing about preparing kids to get into the AP Computer Science courses, but one of the issues that we see happening in the, in the whole educational lifecycle is that, let's say, the kids who want to go into industry, you know, there's average of 12 computers now in every car coming out, 32 in the new ones. And so they're actually finding that if you want a job at a car shop, you better know how to code, you better know how to dissect an e-prom chip or something like that and be able to plug and play with those. How are we working in that, not just in the computer science, you know, straight-line area of those kids who want to code, but in general across the whole educational curriculum to make sure that the knowledge of what's going to be needed and what's already needed in the workplace in every facet of every job is, is being taken care of?
You know, I think our, our secondary and our high school FabLab teachers are a great example of that, who are really taking, you know, some of those, those skills and blending them together. You know, they're working in CAD to make a design and then bringing it to life using programming in the 3D printers and the other devices that we have. So I think, I think we can keep developing that, and I think that's a great example of an opportunity we can have to integrate computer science more into the automotive classes or, you know, the wood, the other design and tech ed classes. I think that's a, and those teachers I know are open and ready to do it because the, the teachers in tech ed, the ones who are teaching, you know, automotive classes, they're also teaching FabLab. So they're doing the CAD and they also have that automotive background as well. So I think that's a huge opportunity for us to put together. So as we develop the high school courses and the program and some of those on-ramp courses, I think those opportunities will come to us.
Okay. And it's really, you know, it's all the sciences.
Yeah.
Even school newspaper.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Absolutely.
Not just automotive.
Absolutely.
Are there any, Stacy?
Just in question to the community ed, support for the girls' code club. So what are we doing as far as, you know, a way to enhance, you know, people getting excited, girls getting excited to join that? And, you know, like, what's our goal? What's the main goal of that? Or number-wise, are we looking for, you know, period of time, number of, you know, days? Or, I mean?
You know, right now, it's kind of a one day a week, really building the community. You know, they had 10 girls in it the first semester and eight or so this semester. We want to keep that community going and just start building from it. And as students come up from elementary, having some of these experiences, we hope to, you know, increase those numbers into maybe one or two sections, who knows, as, as it continues to build. We definitely want to keep the community going. I know some districts are having things like sleep lock-ins, you know, where they maybe work on something for a longer period of time. Maybe it's a kind of a community hack kind of a thing, so that, you know, it's not just a one hour, okay, let's learn a skill and then leave. It's, okay, we're really going to get together and we're going to work on something for a good chunk of time. So I think that could help to kind of build the community as well. We really hope to keep growing. And I know Carrie Dobie and Community Ed have been very supportive of that growth, and Amanda Fay has been a great leader of that program too. So in my head, the sky's the limit. We want to make sure it continues right now.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
A long question to that.
Do you have any other questions? No? Okay. Mary?
With the girls' club, one of the things that we've seen at other, in other districts is, I'm sure if you guys heard about this at Minnetonka, is they had an issue where when they do this stuff after school, especially in middle school, it competes with a lot of other activities. So it tends to not attract or not be able to attract a large portion. Do you have a plan to move that out of a club into an actual curriculum type of environment?
I think we certainly could. I mean, when we look at seventh and eighth grade, the opportunities are quite different. In sixth grade, the digital world class, because of the, the four content area wheel, the opportunities are fairly limited for students to be able to access that class. So when we look at seventh and eighth grade, I think the opportunities really expand. I mean, one of the huge positives I see is that all of our elementary computer science teachers right now and all of our middle school computer science teachers right now are female. So that's a great building block that we have to build from. So I think, you know, as we get into seventh and eighth grade, I think, I'm hoping we'll draw more students in.
I would believe so. They're excited about the opportunity to really embrace it and start moving this into current coursework and taking a look at, is what we're doing still relevant and expand upon that. I think it's, it's definitely going to be the place to look.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the board? Dr. Stallow?
I just have a comment. I want to thank Kevin and John, your entire team, Carrie and Community Ed. You know, this is an example of truly having to be learners in order to be teachers and leaders, and I applaud your efforts. I applaud the efforts of our staff, who, again, this was not their formal training, and it just goes to show that in the course of time from when they started their careers, how much the world is changing. And I have huge gratitude that they're saying, let's do this, let's learn, let's ensure that our students have the skills and knowledge that they're going to need for their futures. And can only imagine, as we start with our five-year-olds and six-year-olds now, how we'll be building courses to be responsive to the needs of our students as they go through our system and continue to learn languages outside of, of what we often think about. So I just want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, thank you. This is a report, only a no-board action is required, requested. Next on the agenda is the facilities planning and construction. The presenter will be Assistant Superintendent Mr. Holmberg and the Executive Director of Business Services, Ms. Sink.
Good evening, Chair Wolf, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. Here tonight to present the four design team plans for elementary for consideration. We're seeking board approval on those this evening. We have had a study session on those plans there in your board packet. I just want to give you just an overview of, this is the work we've been really quickly engaged on as part of our referendum and moving forward. So this is the first group of designs plans coming forward out of that approved referendum. And, and so as a result, really having a design team at each level wrapped around each of these projects and working with the teams at the site to really gauge input, gather perspective, and to really talk through the designs, the renovations, and also the additions. So two of the projects, Five Hawks and Glendale Elementary, those renovations and remodeling are long-term facility maintenance and capital projects. The Jeffers Pond Redtail Ridge additions are part of the approved referendum. And so this evening, I'm, I'm bringing those forward, seeking formal approval on these design plans so that we can move forward as part, and move forward into the next step, which would be the process.
Did you want to go briefly through each of the designs?
I certainly can.
Can you go real quick?
I certainly can.
We have seen these during a study session, the board has, so.
So here is the
And, excuse me, Mr. Holmberg. And Lee reminds me that these have also been through the Facilities Committee.
Correct.
Before the study session.
This is the Five Hawks project. We have a, in, in the middle over here, we are, we are looking at remodel for a special education area, and then a remodel of the downstairs classroom area where our kindergarten classrooms are. This just gives kind of a closer look at that. It gives me a moment, as I look at this, it also gives me a moment to really set the stage for the, kind of the grounding principles for how we're having conversations around the designs. Number one is, to the extent possible, sunlight or being able to bring light into the classrooms is a very important and grounding foundation to where the extent possible, we want to make sure that that's available in our classrooms. And if it already is, to make sure that there's more of it available and that's coming in. And, and there's a lot of research around having access to daylight. Second of all is circulation around the area and to the extent possible, adding collaboration spaces in these areas too. So on this side here, we do add a corridor for increased circulation. We also, looking at the design, we're adding more windows to the outside to bring sunlight in, sunlight into the classrooms, and then sunlight into these corner rooms by creating like a storefront approach to those classrooms. So that is the Five Hawks plan. Let's see.
Mr. Holmberg finish, and then we'll go with the questions. Thank you. Continue.
Okay. On the, on the Glendale plan, we are looking at a area for Level III Special Education area, and so this is a remodel in the existing lower floor of the building. We're looking at special education, a Level III program. We're looking for opportunities where there's space for whole group instruction as well as small group instruction, and then having spaces that meet the needs of students that have tho, have, have those needs. So you'll see small group learning, you'll see a changing room, and, you know, students in Level III programs as well as outside of special education programs, we do see students that need a private place for toileting and executive function, things that need to, they need to take care of. This is also part of the remodel at Five Hawks as well, adding a changing area and a quiet room. We do move the music room over and, which allows for more storage. And then we also have a smart room, which all of our buildings have, that allows students kinesthetic movement in order to help their, with their learning styles. I'll go through the other two and I'd be happy to take questions. Jeffers Pond and Redtail Ridge. I'll show you one because obviously they're the mirror image, but I'd be happy to show both for both of, but they're the same addition. Again, this is part of the, the approved referendum. Two new classrooms and a resource area added onto Redtail Ridge and to Jeffers Pond. As you can see here, the, the resource area where you can come in, there's a doors out each side, and then there's doors that go into the classroom. Consistent with our kindergarten rooms, we have a toilet in each room. Drinking fountains are on the outside in the resource area. And then there's a joint storage room for both kindergarten classrooms, which is important. Kindergarten does have a lot of manipatives and materials for student learning. What you also see here too, and I, I could have referenced this in the others, we, this is a higher level of detail. We, we did talk about flooring options with the design teams and looking at kindergarten rooms. We're looking at an LVT, which is like a vinyl to allow for projects, snacks, some of those other kind of components that are easy to clean up. And then we also allow for a carpeted space too, for students to do small group learning. Again, the same principles of adding sunlight, circulation, and collaboration space were really the lenses that we looked at for, for all of these projects. So with that, questions?
Okay. Well, why don't we take a motion and a second first, and then we'll begin the question. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the designs for Five Hawks, Glendale, Jeffers Pond, and Redtail Ridge as presented?
A motion.
By Ben, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee. Do I have any questions or comments?
Jeff, I was just wondering if you could go through and, because, are there, could you just specify the changes of what we had originally talked about during the referendum? Because there are some changes.
Yeah. So one of the things, and I, I'm glad I'm on the Redtail Ridge, one of the, one of the things that we had talked about from a, getting a design concept and building a budget, we had the original addition coming off of Jeffers Pond and Redtail Ridge into the playground area. And through the design team process, we recognized that having the addition back here did not, made much more sense for a couple of reasons. Number one, it put the, these two kindergarten classrooms close to the existing kindergarten classrooms. It also did not require us to move any of the playground equipment or go into the playground space, and it allowed us not to have to redo the entrance and exit into the cafeteria area. So that's one key piece that was, that's different or that has So that's one key piece, uh, that was, that's different or that has evolved through the design team process for both Jeffers Pond and Redtail Ridge. And I think, I believe Five Hawks and, and Glendale were consistent with the, with the difference of, with Glendale. Our original proposal through the process was changing these three classrooms on the upper level into a sped, into the sped area. And through the design team process, we again talked about, does this make the most sense? And we started talking about, you know, the small group learning, uh, opportunities for small group learning. And we started shifting our attention to the area in the lower level, which is what we're proposing this evening. And so again, we didn't have to take away classroom space, you know, formal classroom space, uh, for this, but allowed us to look at the area in Glendale a little bit more specifically. Uh, and looking at this space, it is very conducive to a site-based program, which affords the different smaller rooms and the larger room for group instruction. And I believe the Five Hawks design is fairly consistent with what we've communicated in terms of the special education room remodel, um, the changing rooms, small group learning, and then, um, also with the, uh, the kindergarten classrooms renovation on the lower level.
Are there any other questions or comments?
One more.
Okay, we'll let Mary go first and finish hers and then.
Could you address, um, so construction's going to start this summer?
Pending board approval of the designs and moving forward with the bidding and all of those steps. Yes, we would be looking at starting, uh, this spring. There would be work starting, preliminary work, site preparations. But we intend for the, uh, for the projects to be completed this summer and ready for the opening of the 2018 school year.
And could you address how we're going to handle the, um, summer sessions going on at each one of these schools?
We have been working with our principals about, uh, coordinating where summer school targeted services will be taking place. And we, we are moving student programs out of these sites and so that construction can take place. And we're not impacting the programs and learning for students. And so they are, they are going to be in different places. I know, I believe Kids Company is going to be at the high school. And, um, I believe Westwood and Edgewood will also have some, uh, programming as well. And so we will, we're, we're being, trying to be very sensitive and proactive with summer programs so we can still offer them, yet not, uh, impact the instruction and vice versa, the construction not impact the student programs.
Just a little clarification. Um, at Jeffers Pond, we're, it looks like we're having to move some, um, a trail or a road back there. And, and that still keeps us within our property lines and all that stuff? And then, and then is there anything like that going on at Redtail? Cause I didn't see it on here. Okay, that was okay.
One of the things with the Jeffers Pond property is when we're looking at coming out, uh, toward the, the playground, talked about moving it to the back of the building, we have a property line with the city that's considerably closer at Jeffers Pond versus Redtail Ridge. And so we did work with the city to grant an easement. And we have a very good working relationship with the city, uh, to be able to make this happen. And I know it did go through city council, um, through the consent agenda, and so they've been very good partners with us. As a result, we do, it is the fire access road that's back there that will be moved. And so that will be a new trail connection that's, that's determined that serves as that fire access to the back of the building.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes seven zero.
Chair Wolf, one more thing. Um, item E in your, uh, board agenda. Uh, Mr. Delwo tonight will be coming forward to seek approval for advert, advertisement for bid pack four. These projects are bid pack four.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the AIA construction agreements presented by, uh, Executive Director of Business Services, Services, Ms. Sink.
Good evening Chair Wolf, Dr. Stallow and the board members. Um, bringing forward the AIA documents, um, to move forward on the referendum projects that were, um, approved by our voters in November. And, um, so what's in your packet is the exact same AIA document that was approved as part of our long-term facility maintenance and has been brought forward, um, and reviewed by our, um, legal counsel. And then the documents, um, ref- reflect all of the, um, costs associated with the, um, bond issue. And that's the first part of it. And the second part is, as part of our entire referendum, um, the board had decided to move some things into long-term facility maintenance. And we already have that, uh, agreement in place. And so what we'd like to do is just make a amendment for those projects. And that's the second portion of that, uh, the amendments, um, reflecting those, just those couple of projects at Grainwood, um, and, um, Glendale.
All right. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the AIA agreement for the bond projects and for the amendment to the long-term facilities maintenance AIA agreement for bond projects?
So moved.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Todd. Are there any questions or comments? Todd?
Um, just to clarify, these documents were reviewed by our attorneys. And, uh, with that, they in essence work in our best interest and feel it is in the best interest that these documents are.
As they, they, yes.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, I had a question that wasn't answered earlier. The attorneys that reviewed this, um, all the changes on the documents right now, um, are not, are not noted by the attorneys. And also are the attorneys solely representing the district or do they represent both, both the architect builder or the, uh, construction performance contractor and us?
The dis, the district's, um, legal counsel solely represents the district. Um, we brought forward those changes and they are noted, um, any lined items are noted as part of that process in this, these documents.
Do, do we have any red lines or any attorney's notes associated with the changes that were made to the documents?
No.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Uh, seeing none others, all those in favor signify by, for the acceptance of the AI agreement for the bond projects and the amendment to the long-term facilities maintenance AIA agreement for bond projects signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
That passes six to one. Next on the agenda is the district roofing projects bid approval, uh, presented tonight by Director of Operations and Transportation, Mr. Delwo.
Good evening Chair Wolf, um, School Board, Dr. Stallow. Uh, I have before you a, uh, request to accept the bids for the, um, remaining roof projects for the school district. Um, one of the attachments that was provided is a map of the remaining roofs after this project is completed. Um, every single roof in our district will be completed with, um, long warranties on them. So that's good news and I appreciate support on those projects. Um, also is an award letter from Garland, our roofing contracting consultant, uh, and manufacturer of the roofing that we use, uh, along with the bid tabulation. Um, the apparent low bidder is Schwickert's, uh, Tech America. They have done work in our district before and they've done good work in our district. So as you can see, we had five, uh, five qualified bidders for the Garland roof. And, um, uh, Schwickert's came in apparent low. I'm seeking tonight approval of the, um, bid results and award contract to Schwickert's.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the district roofing projects bid?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ben, are there any questions or comments? You have one, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's actually a two-part question. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. Schwickert's, they, they're the, they won the previous bid, right?
Uh, they've worked at our district before. The most recent was McPhillips.
Okay. I thought Schwickert's did part of the bid that was awarded last year, spring or something like that.
Uh, I believe that was McPhillips.
Both of them?
For the high school.
Okay. There, there's a middle school.
Previously, that would have been. Some of that was Schwickert's, I believe.
That's, okay. Um, and then, um, you know, everything looks good to me. That one of the things that we talked about last year when we were, we're doing this bid is, um, ensuring that the bid process, um, was electronic and that it was placed on, um, bidding, uh, locations instead of just in the Prior Lake American or something that would give us a better, um, better options on those bids?
Great. Uh, so for coverage on these particular projects or the Garland, they have to be a qualified Garland roof installer.
Okay.
Um, so we did not send it out to the exchanges, um, uh, because it just, it, it, it didn't make sense. There, not every roofer can put on a Garland roof.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yep. And so on these, that's why we, um, did not do that.
If you had put it out in the exchanges, but then put in there that, that it had to be a, you know, they had to be a qualified or certified implementer or installer of a Garland roof, would that have, um, left us with the same group in the state? Or is that, would that been-
I think Mary, it would have. I mean, in this state for sure. I mean, uh, maybe somebody from Chicago would punch a button and throw a bid in and.
Okay. Kind of doubt that, but, all right. Um, and then the electronic process was the, instead of having the bids hand delivered or mailed in, did we have them emailed in?
Uh, no.
A point of order, Mr. Delwo, a point of order. The board has not given direction on any new bid processes for the administration to undertake. And they're using the existing protocol that the board has directed for them to receive bids. So that question is, Mr. Delwo was not able to answer that question because that would be outside of protocol. So he received bids according to the existing protocol established by the school board directing the administration to take bids.
Does he, can I ask a question on that, Rich? Does the existing protocol require them to be mailed or elected? It's actually missing in the current protocol.
What is your question again?
If it was going to be emailed in or mailed in. I don't believe that was part of the protocol.
The bids are presented in person, correct, Mr. Delwo?
They can be mailed in. Uh, they are opened, um, they are opened, uh, the envelopes are opened at the bid meeting. So at the bid opening, uh, every bid is opened, uh, at that time.
Okay. Can I qualify, um, Rich, what I was referring to?
Quickly, please.
The qualification had to do with just making sure that there's no discrimination and there's no issue with any bidders coming in saying that they mailed it and mailed slow, there's a snow day, something like that. So when you email something in, you actually have a time and date stamp on it. So, so you have a clear direction and, and it eliminates, almost completely eliminates the ability for somebody to come back and say, no, I sent this in at some, such and such time. So just trying to clear enough the process. And we, we talked about that and I don't believe the protocol actually states mail or email. But our process that I've noticed so far has been to mail them in. And so it, it was just a matter of clarification.
Okay. Mail or hand deliver is typically how the envelopes appear. And then they're timestamped when we receive them.
Right.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor for the approval of Schwickert's Tech America to receive the bid for the district roofing project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the advertisement for bid pack four. Mr. Delwo.
Thank you again. Um, so Jeff highlighted what, uh, projects are going to be bid packed for. Uh, the funding sources for those projects are bond, capital and deferred maintenance. The idea is to bid a large group of projects so we get, um, good coverage and make it attractive to bidders. The timeline would be, uh, the bid documents would be coming within a couple of weeks. We would like to go out to bid on, uh, Monday, March ninth, I believe it is. March fifth, I'm sorry. And we'd like a, a bid opening date of April third. That would give, um, bidders plenty of time to look at what is up for bid. Um, and again, like LTFM, we would, uh, get the, um, plans to Franz for their plan room. Uh, last time, um, uh, the, the Minnaapp or Minnesota, um, plan room picked them up and we also sent them a Dodge. So we had fairly good coverage. And that would be our plan again for this next round.
Ask for a motion? Yeah. Okay. Uh, so do I have a motion? Any others? Do you want to add before we take a motion?
No, that covers the outline of it. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the advertisement for bid pack four? By Ben, do I have a second? By Mary, are there any questions or comments? I have one question on the bid pack for just the four items we were reviewed, we, we approved tonight then?
Correct.
Okay. In the long-term facility maintenance, refresh my memory again.
Uh, that's a funding source for some of those, um, projects.
Will those, those will be accomplished this summer?
Along with this project.
Has that been bid? Refresh for-
It will be bid.
Okay. Is part of this process then?
Yes, for these particular projects, yes.
That's what I wanted, just to clarify there. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is 2018, 2019 enrollment update. This is a report only and no board action is required or requested. Director of Business Services, Ms. Sink.
Evening again. Um, just a quick update on our enrollment where we're at currently, um, I should say for the next year. As we're looking at starting the budget process for next year, we've been having quite a bit of discussion on what that enrollment will look like, um, for next year. We utilize, um, several different enrollment assumptions, the moderate to high district, um, growth and migration. Open enrollment is closed at one percent at grades one through twelve and seventy-five students at kindergarten. We're anticipating approximately eighty-eight hundred students, grade K through twelve, including our ALC. And so those numbers, um, would be about two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-seventy-five students, more than what we currently have, um, for this school year. We'll have a longer discussion at our next study session as we go over enrollment and we, um, talk about how that enrollment affects our budget, all that, um, process. We wanted to start at the last meeting, which was delayed. And so we'll be bringing that forward at our next study session. I also wanted to include our kindergarten enrollment. As you can see, um, we have four-hundred-and-three students, resident students enrolled in our district as of two-seven, um, comparing that to the same time last year, we had three-hundred-and-eighty-three. And so you can see what schools that they fall into at this time. And we often look at this and allow these resident students to continue to come in before we will place our open enrolled students in any building just to make sure that, um, where we have space available or, um, where we have, um, a, a number of students. So we, so we can lower those class sizes, um, unfriendly numbers, we often call those. And so what we try and do is make them so that we can lower those class sizes by, um, adding in a few additional open enrolled students to a certain, um, school or class. So we would have seventy-five students, open enrolled students, um, that would be going into these, um, buildings. I just want to make one note that our La Ola de Lago, um, it shows, um, eighty students this year that our resident students, um, and last year was sixty-eight. And so I think that's a really strong showing how, um, our Spanish immersion is really attracting our resident, um, student population right now.
All right. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Sink?
I have a question.
Melissa.
Uh, what is our plan for the placement of the open enrolled students? Looks like we have about a hundred and five students that come, will come in, the seventy-five that are kindergarten. And then the one percent at each of the grade levels adds up to about thirty additional students. So about a hundred and five roughly. What is the plan for them? Will they go to Glendale automatically since they are, um, since that's where we have, or it looks like Jeffers, Grainwood?
This really depends on where we have space. And that's why they won't be placed until May. So just so that you know that we won't place these open enrolled students until May because that allows us the most time. Number one, to allow resident, additional resident students to come in and where they're going to be attending. And then, um, it allows our staff and our principals, they all work together to talk through where do they, where should we, how many students in each building or each class? It really depends. And so we'd really spend some time walking through that, going through those numbers. There's other, um, things that we'll also look at as far as their needs of those students.
So I guess I was looking for like, what is the, the pattern of where we typically put them? Is that a board decision? Is it just left up to the principals?
It hasn't been in the past. It's been the principals where they feel that, that is, they're best accommodated. So in, in the past, we have, do have some plans like Westwood, um, because La Ola de Lago- because La Ola de Lago is growing, we need to move the fourth grade into some of the regular building space of Westwood. And so there may be fewer open enrolled students in that school, so that we have enough room for our residents and those people going into that program for one more year here. And then, but it really just depends on where you can see the need. So last year, there's more students at Five Hawks this year. There's, just really depends on Grainwood, we typically see more students come in, and we know that will happen later. Those students typically register later. It just really depends on the area. We kind of have a pattern that we, that is followed every year.
One last question. Is it safe to say, because Redtail Ridge is so overpopulated, that we won't have any open enrolled students going to Redtail Ridge?
Safe to say that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Mary?
Thank you, Julie, for qualifying what you thought our increase, the two seventy-five to three hundred students. Just, I have a two-part question. The first part is, did that include open enrollment? The, okay. And where do you see the majority of those students coming in? Is that going to be at the elementary level? Is it going to be spread all over?
Actually, I really see it in our middle level this year. If I'm looking at the numbers preliminarily, we have a very large fifth grade class going into sixth grade. And as you know, we've talked about it several years now, that we see a huge migration in sixth grade into people moving into the district. Their students are coming here in sixth grade. And so I see that our sixth grade class could become one of our largest ever of sixth grade classes for next year. And so that's going to make our middle school really bubble for next year. And as they go through those years, we'll see that continue to grow. So it'll be our middle school next year. I, I think that our elementaries, because we have that biggest fifth grade moving out there, you know, they should, they should be okay for next year. And then in our high school, again, we will see those big numbers coming in.
Okay.
We, not to say that we won't see growth at our elementary, because we certainly will. We're going to see growth at every level. It's really going to be, though, a big, a big jump at our middle level.
It does look fairly large on all the elementary school levels, and that's why I was wondering about if the bulk, if you see the bulk at sixth grade, the rest of it, then you think is going to be at the elementary?
And the high school.
In the high school, okay.
So it's kind of that.
Have that much growth there.
It's all, all levels.
Okay, all right.
We saw, just historically, so this last year, this current year that we're in, I would say, because I'm already in next year, but this current year that we're in, kind of reverted back to where we saw more students at our middle level in our high school. The previous two years to that, we saw a lot more students at our elementary level. But, you know, these kindergarten numbers are up a little bit, so it makes me wonder if we're going to see them at the elementary again. I don't have a crystal ball. I wish I did, but, you know, some of those indicators are out there that will be continuing to grow.
Rich, I have one more question. Where, when, when do you see, do you think we'd have, when do you think we're going to get the best estimate? I mean, is that closer to the end of this year, April or May, or, when, when do you think we can?
As far as estimate of for next year budget, or estimate for, we're going to see actually students come in?
Well, when do you usually get your best projection? And not, I, I know that obviously the first day of school is the best, but what I'm saying is, is for planning purposes. Do you think we'll know by April or May?
Oh, for sure.
Okay.
We'll know.
Dr. Stallow, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind board members and the community that we really are, this is the start of the budget season. And, and these numbers, as you can even see from, you know, January eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, to last week, you can see the changes in numbers, and we're going to continue seeing that, just as our trends have over the years. You know, I certainly applaud Ms. Sink. I don't know the numbers in the last couple of years, how many you've been off, but it sure hasn't been many in terms of enrollment projections. So, you know, I've learned to be sure that we go with the ebb and flow of what happens and to ensure that we help principals and staff and, and parents not get overly emotional or concerned about trends that might be happening right now, because it seems like it, over the months, it usually evens out. But we'll be in a, a great place in May to take a look at, like you said, for staffing reasons, especially where we would have room for those, the students who are open enrolled.
Thank you. That is just a report only. I see no other questions. Next is the annual resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons thereof. Executive Director of Human Resources, Mr. Matt Mons.
Just as a way of explanation, this is a resolution that we pass each year in the spring or at the end of the winter. And this is really a, just in case something happens where we would need to make a reduction. That can happen for a number of reasons, and it's not necessarily tied to a budget shortfall. So that could be a case where licensure may become an issue. And this puts us in the position that if any reductions do need to be made, we have that option. In this year, I do not anticipate needing to make any reductions in programs or staffing.
All right. Do I have a motion for the, in resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons thereof?
I'll move.
No, you have to be second.
It was Melissa.
Melissa, second, and a second?
Sure.
The reason I have her is, her name is already on the resolution. Shimick for second in the motion, so. Are there any, what's that?
I was confused.
No, you were, you were seconded by. So are there any questions or comments for Mr. Mons? Seeing none, this is a resolution, so it'll be a roll call vote. Aye.
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 That passes seven zero. Next on the agenda is the School Board Recognition Week Resolution, presented by Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I am delighted this evening to recognize School Board Recognition Week, which will be February twentieth through February twenty-fourth. And I'd like to share the resolution because I think it speaks to the incredible time and energy and work that our school board members put forth. So I'd like to read this, please. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure efficient, effective school systems, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal government and ensuring compliance with state and federal law, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board by proclaiming February twentieth through twenty-fourth as School Board Recognition Week. I'd like to thank board members for the time and energy that this, that this role takes, especially over the last couple of years in our school district, as we've been seeing increasing growth and have gone through two referendums. The additional hours that you have spent in meetings, studying issues outside of meetings, communicating with stakeholders truly is exceptional. Publics, public education needs champions, and I want to thank all of you for being champions of public education, champions of children, and ensuring that what we do serves children best. I want to thank you for your vision with our strategic plan and for the support that you give, staff and teachers and administrators in the work that we do in support of that strategic plan and our, our children. So truly know that we do salute you, not just this week, that is actually being recognized, but every day. So thank you very much.
No board action is requested at this time.
It might.
We have no policy for this evening. Next on the agenda is administrative report to Superintendent Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners, to reach their full potential. As contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community, our collective work is focused on achieving that mission, and tonight I would like to highlight some of the work in which we've been engaged. I do want to talk just a little bit about the attendance boundary adjustments. I appreciate that we had some parents here this evening that shared their perspective as well. Just want to remind the board and our community that after the January study session, principals at Redtail, Westwood, and Glendale shared the board's attendance boundary discussions and potential changes for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Families that would be directly impacted were sent communication first, followed by larger, the larger school communities to ensure clear and consistent communication with all stakeholders. Families were invited to direct any questions that they might have to their building principals. And it was also explained that board action would be taken in March. We did hear from some parents this evening. I did check in with the principals, and they have not heard, they've received very little feedback, other than a few parents who have asked some clarifying questions. We also made sure to let families know that we'll communicate again once the board has taken action. And at that time, we'll form a plan to ensure that families who are directly affected are clear on where their children will attend school this fall. Also, in other action, we've launched another community satisfaction phone survey with Morris Leatherman. The majority of the questions that we are using remain the same from survey to survey, so that we can continue to benchmark our data over time. This year, we did add a question to gauge how important classroom design is to student learning. We hope this will be helpful data as we plan for our upcoming building projects, and we'll share that with our design teams and architects. The phone survey includes parents as well as residents who do not have students attending Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. We anticipate the results will be ready in time for the March study session, at which time Peter Leatherman will share results and provide his analysis. Later this month, we'll also send our own annual surveys to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, staff, students, and parents. I also just wanted to share with you, I enjoyed spending the day at Prior Lake High School last week and helped over three hundred seniors launch their twenty percent projects. These projects provide an opportunity for student-centered, project-based learning, where students really get to choose a passion area to learn more about. The twenty percent project started with Google employees and has kind of spread into, into, obviously, education as well. These projects will be presented, the final projects will be presented at the end of the semester, so we'll be sure to let you know when that is and see if any of you can attend. Also, while I had a chance to spend some time with students, I did also ask them to, I gathered some input and perspective from them about classroom design as well. So again, we'll take that information from them and bring it to our, our high school design team, so that we can be sure that we have lots of student perspective in, in the process. Thank you.
Are there any administrative reports this evening? All right, any board reports? We'll start with student room.
So it's been pretty busy at the high school. So last week was Sweethearts Week. We planned many fun events for the students, including coronation, a dodgeball tournament, pep fest, and a dance. And overall, the week was a big success. We've also got a lot of activities and sports going on, so just to highlight a few, our speech and mock trial teams have been doing very well. We have a freshman going to state for Alpine skiing this year, which is really cool. Girls hockey is advancing in sections, and they have a game tomorrow night. Both of the dance teams, jazz and kick dances, are going to state this year, which is kind of cool, because usually their kick dance doesn't go to state, but both of them made it this year. And then our cheer team is currently in Disney World, and they actually placed fourth in the nation, which is cool.
Okay. Are there any other board reports? Lee?
I have a couple. I attended a scale meeting last week, and Senator Pratt also spoke, similar to what he did tonight, but he spoke to the whole contingent at scale, which is the county. So it was kind of nice to hear him speak on education, in a non, non-educational environment, so to speak. So that was good. Talked a lot about what he had to say tonight. Also went to a community ed meeting, and they are very busy. They're trying to do some, a program with Youth Development Services for leadership and job training, and that probably dovetails right in with the coding, expanding the after-school programming. That's going to be more and more popular. Some upcoming events is Dance With Me Ball, which used to be the daughter, father, daughter dance. I think they've expanded that to have more variety of people being able to be involved. And there's a Career and Job Fair coming up on March twenty-seventh at the high school that they sponsor. So a lot of things went on in community ed. And then I had the opportunity, which was a highlight for me, to go to Grainwood about a week ago and listen to the concerts for the kindergarten and first graders. And Mrs. Hipke, who has just recently come back into teaching music, had all those little kids doing it perfectly. And it was really, really fun. It was very priceless, special time, so. And then I guess I'll say that my two grandchildren were there, so of course it was really good. So it was busy, it was fun.
Are there any other board reports? Mary?
I attended the MinCaps presentation, and that was very, very good. I'm not only mentoring a couple of the girls, but also got to see all the presentations. They've, they've come quite a long way, so that was very impressive. And the kids, some of the kids were finishing up their projects and others were just kicking them off. And what we saw in the beginning of the year versus now, the presentation skills, their ability to gauge metrics, their communication skills, their, their cooperation, their collaboration skills was just amazing to see the improvement with these kids. So that was a very, very good experience, and I hope they continue. I also attended the High Tech Challenge Robotics Competition this past Saturday. The kids started on Friday. I couldn't stay for all the rounds on Saturday. When I left, our high school team was in the fifth place. And the Saint Mike's team was, I think, in eleventh place, and you had to be in the top twelve in order to continue on to state. The enthusiasm, particularly of the little kids, was just amazing. And, and if anyone's ever been there, they practice what's known as cooperat, co-opetition, which is all the kids go to all the other tables and learn about their designs and share the knowledge between them. And then for the last couple of years, instead of individually competing, the teams compete with one another. So they grab other teams. So it's not just Prior Lakes Robotics Team against somebody else. They actually have to work with another school. They have four that compete, two on each side, and they've got to quickly come up with a strategy and, and determine how to get the most points. So if their robot fails, they depend on the other school's robot. And that did happen. Both of them had electrical problems. But it was a very, very good experience, and I look forward to hearing how they actually ended up, because they don't list that online. I've got to actually call and ask. So hopefully, they did well.
Are there any other board reports? Stacy?
I have one. I attended, Dr. Stallow and I, attended C, the Schools for Equity and Education on Friday. And the, one of the main topics was preserving concurrent enrollment courses, because right now, there's, I think, it's kind of the way the legislature's been going, and, and I think demand for it is having kids take concurrent classes. That would be qualifying for college credits, you know, while they're in high school. And so there were a number of people on the panel, someone, a coordinator at Normandale, there was the coordinator for the Minnesota State Colleges, and then there was an actual, a person from Mountain View Public Schools, who's their post-secondary planning coordinator. So someone speaking from the schools level. It was, it was really interesting. I think there's a deadline of 2022 to make sure that any secondary teacher that's teaching a concurrent horse, course, has eighteen graduate college credits. So they're looking at ways and which to accomplish that, because that's a lot of credits for teachers to take. So it was, it was interesting. I, I think it's going to be an ongoing conversation, but it's definitely, I think, something that students are interested in, as well as education professionals. So that was good. And then I did also hear Senator Pratt, too, the next two hours after you heard him. So I heard the same spiel.
He was busy that day.
He was busy. And also Representative Erickson was there just to kind of talk about education policy priorities in the coming session. So that was good. And then one other note, for the Minnesota State High School League, our Activities Director, Russ Reitz, is currently on the nomination for Board of Directors, which doesn't come up about once every eight years. So he's been nominated to be on the Board of Directors. I don't know if he's going to get it or anything. I just, it's a big deal, I think, to get on the nomination. So that's pretty exciting. So that's it for me.
Got it. I have one final one since our last formal meeting. I had a chance to attend the MSBA Leadership Conference on the early session Wednesday night with Lee and Stacy. Talked about the superintendent evaluation and those recommendations as we develop them. We'll be coming forward to the board. I also attended sessions to discuss with board chairs current topics, Bid Law Basics Roundtable, talked, attended the director district discussions. District Discussions. And Lisa Anderson from Eastern Carver County is now the new MSBA District Thirteen representative. And I also attended a session on the New Tiered Teacher Relationship Program. Wow, there. And I also had a chance today to go to the high school and visit during the lunch with Mr. Bezek, get a little idea. I hadn't been there for a couple of years, so get an idea of the flow, especially through the cafeteria, and, and look at how the students really use the building with regards to any design change that'll come. So that's it. And Melissa?
Two small ones. At MSBA, a couple of us had the opportunity to take in a different session, and that was on computer security and the importance of having a plan for internet security in, in the case that cyber events, right, exactly. So that was interesting. And then I attended the Special Ed Committee meeting, and we discussed team teaching and the importance of that with the Special Ed community.
Thank you. Future events, any, seeing none. Future events, February nineteenth, there's no school. February twenty-sixth, we have a board development session right here at DSC at four P.M. And that same day, we have a board study session at six P.M. right here in this room. March fifth, we'll have a joint meeting with the city of Prior Lake, right here, probably in this room, or maybe in the, DSC at five P.M. And then we'll have a regular board meeting in this room at seven P.M. following that. And then C-Day at Students for Equity and Education Day at the Capitol is Tuesday, March sixth. And next on the agenda is a closed session for discussing, discussing negotiation salary strategy. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? By Ben, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy. We are now in closed session. Take a few minutes. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So made.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that passes seven zero. We are adjourned.